Myself here, Donna is absent.
Thank you. Uh, approve the agenda, action item. Please note, there is a uh addendum to the agenda for a couple of items, N and O for the order. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Motion by Jamie, do a second.
Motion second.
Second by Clark. Do approve the agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Announcements. The next regular school board meeting will be Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. In the Glencoe Silver Lake Schools, meeting room four four three, four four four. Acknowledges, do we have any acknowledges at this time?
Uh, I can put a couple, add a couple in my, my report, but I can mention them now. Uh, I want, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to our custodial staff and the work that they're doing this summer. They're really moving along, lots of things that are happening, so I really appreciate all the work that they are doing for them. I also would like to acknowledge the, the people that helped out at the Glencoe Days, Flip Burgers at the, the, our stand when we represented our school district. And then also would like to say congratulations to our trap shooting team. Uh, we had uh several members competed in Nationals over this last weekend. And uh, the team ended up taking thirty-fourth, from my understanding, out of um, a lot. Um, and then we had a couple of Andrew Kettner and Logan Mussey, uh, they were in the top one hundred. Apparently, there was close to eighteen hundred uh participants, so a pretty impressive uh representation for G S L, so congratulations to them.
Thank you. Any other acknowledges? Any uh public input for the, to the agenda? Second uh call for public input and third call for public input. Any reports and presentations? None at this time? Alright, Michelle, that's Andrew.
Yeah, most of my things are part of the agenda, but I'll just give you a quick, quick update on some of our projects. Um, as Chris just mentioned, lots of work is happening around the school. If you've been watching and paying attention, you'll see a lot of things happening inside and outside. So, our auditorium stage lighting, the last phase of that is now completed, so that takes care of that. The work out at the stadium, the new seal coating, they, uh, I think finished or I know they're working on the crack filling. The heat patches were done before, now they're doing the crack filling and will start the seal coating out there. So that got started today. The track resurfacing project got started today as well. I know when I talked to Mr. Schwartz earlier, he said they were busy cleaning it the last he had been out there checking on it. And I, they sent their uh painting colors and stuff for, for Dean and the coaches to approve, so we're working on that. The concrete at both the high school in front of Lincoln is done. We have a little filling of the dirt uh around the concrete that has to happen yet. The eleven unit ventilators happening at Lakeside, they have been working on them. Um, they're about a third done of the, of them, that work up at Lakeside. The ceilings, uh, the demo had happened back in June and now they're starting to put the new ceilings and lights back in uh up there. Third grade classrooms has all been demoed, or restrooms, not classrooms, the restrooms have all been demoed. Um, the painting is done. The partitions and new um stools and stuff will go in the end of July and the new flooring, I think, will go in next week. The fieldhouse, the epoxy paint on the floors has been completed. The carpeting has been completed, they have a little bit of work left to do in that kitchen area behind the desk in the fieldhouse. And then the cove base and all the bottom has to be finished up. And then the new desk, we don't know when that'll be completed, that's being built, so that might take a while. And then the, the small pool deck tile repairs will happen the end of July as well. And the big steam coil on top of the high school will happen, it is here, um, we do know that, so they want to, we focused on the univentilators first to get those back in the classroom. So, lots of things going on. Oh, and the locker, the new locker install started today. That's in the science hallway at the high school, so the demo happened last week, those are all out. And I started the install today, I peeked over there earlier and the new ones look really nice. Look very similar to what was there, but they're not banged up, dented up and hanging crooked, so. Yeah, so they're, they're looking really nice. So, that's what I have on projects. Do you have any questions on, on projects or things that are happening around the schools? The, like Chris mentioned, the guys have been busy or the team has been busy cleaning with the moves they can get to. And as soon as summer school wraps up at the end of the month, then they will get the rest of, rest of things looking good. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent support.
Thank you again, most of my things are on the agenda as well. Uh, but just to update you on a couple of things. Um, we're busy finishing up uh our workshop schedule in one date that I would like to pass on to the, the, the board. And we'll, we'll uh talk a little bit more about this next month. But September first, we have the opportunity to have Adolf Brown um speak to our staff. And it'll be on September first at, I think it's nine or eight fifteen is when he's going to start. Um, he's a renowned speaker, uh, I think Michelle just recently saw him at her Masville. Um, and uh, it, it's gonna be a really great experience. And if there's an opportunity for you guys to um, you know, take an hour and a half away from your, your jobs on that particular day, I, I strongly encourage you to attend that, that, that speaker. His primary uh topic is race, uh, and equity and those types of things. And um, he, he's renowned, he's national, and it, and it's just a wonderful opportunity for our staff and some of those things. So, uh, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we're finalizing that workshop schedule. And uh, it's gonna be a, a great opening workshop for our staff. Right now, we're currently still at eighty-four for our kindergarten count. Uh, looking to, to see if that'll still grow a little bit. I know that in talking with Bill and Kim in the, in the elementary office, um, there's still about ten or twelve that they expect to show up. Uh, so we should be in that ninety-five, we hope, right around that ninety-five, one hundred count once it, once it's all said and done. Um, really childhood, we, we, you guys will, that's one of the agenda items that we have is that we did uh recommend a coordinator. Um, and uh, we went through that process here last week and uh really excited about the opportunity there. And uh, other than that, it's been a busy summer so far.
Thank you. Any questions for superintendent, superintendent Sanju? Uh, moving on to committee reports, do we have any for this meeting? Alright. We'll move on to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Alicia, do a second.
Second.
Second by Clark. Do approve the consent agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Old business, there's none at this time, we'll jump into new business. Uh, item A, Minnesota State High School League membership, action item, inclusion number two. Annually, the school board must act to renew the membership in Minnesota State High School League. The board is, is required to review the why we play a training video in quote contact stating. The signature of the superintendent and the clerk of the super uh school board affirm such compliance. It is the recommendation of the school superintendent and Minnesota State High School League membership be approved for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John, do a second. I'll make the second. Uh, any questions or comments? Pretty standard.
Yeah, this is things that we do each year and then the, the link, I believe, is on the website for you guys to view. If you have any questions on that, just let me know. No.
Alright, I have motion by John, second by Jason, to approve the membership in the Minnesota State High School League for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item B, approve long-term facilities maintenance plan, action item, inclusion number three. A ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan uh must be approved by the board by July thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. The L T F M plan needs to be approved yearly and submitted to the M D E for approval before it can be included with a preliminary levy. The plan has been reviewed by facilities, many directors, also in the department, superintendent Sanju, business manager standard, and, and they are recog- Excuse me. Uh, the plan has been um looked at by directors, also in the department, superintendent Sanju and business manager standard. And they are recommending approval of the plan. A roll call vote will be taken.
Jamie?
Four.
Clark?
Four.
John?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
And myself, four.
Donna is absent.
Yes, and Donna is absent.
I tend to do it's backwards.
Oh, sure, you can turn them over.
Well, this, not painful. Alright, do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Clark. Do I have a second? Second resolution. Do adopt a resolution adopting the long-term facilities maintenance, you know, if you have ten-year plan. Can we count the roll call vote as okay? Let's read it.
Okay, Jamie?
Still four.
Clark?
Four.
John?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
Myself, four, and then Donna is absent.
Moving on to item C. Central Lakes College and School Contract, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the uh C I S contract with Central Lakes College for twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Alicia, second by Jamie. Do approve the C I S contract with Central Lakes College for twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. Any questions or comments on this?
So this is the uh contract that we have with, for band and choir. And it worked out really well last year and we'd like to redo that again.
This allows them to have those as issued as college credit.
College credit. Well, correct.
Yep.
For band and choir.
Correct.
As long as it's small pieces.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Sounds good. Alright, we have a motion by Alicia, second by Jamie, to approve the C I S contract with Central Lakes College for twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item D, award field bids, action item, inclusion number four. Two sealed bids were received on July fifth, um, one Co-op and QuickTrip. Uh, Co-op was a discount point zero six at the pump, price per diesel and gas. Uh, QuickTrip was a dis- excuse me, a discount fifteen cents at the pump for diesel and eight cents for gasoline. Is the recommendation of superintendent Sanju, business manager standard, to accept the bid for gas and diesel from like the Co-op from July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'll indicate a motion and then I'm sure we'll get some information on this. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark, do a second.
Second.
Second by John. Uh, to approve the bid for gas, diesel, or for, any, any comments?
Yeah, um, as you can see, we're recommending to go with the Co-op, that's who we've had this last year. And they are um only at the six cents compared to the eight cents for QuickTrip. Two years ago, we had QuickTrip. And what we found is because it's based off the pump price, and I had a couple of conversations with QuickTrip there, pump price could never keep up with the Co-op. It was this kind of ongoing battle that they would have their, their manager, they couldn't keep up with it. So they ended up, it was costing us more in the long run because their pump price was higher. The day we checked and did our tally for the bidding, um, they were at the same pump price, but that a lot of times doesn't happen. I visited with both um the bus garage and with Brady, um, the ones that are going to the pump. With four point oh switching to almost all their buses now with gas, they're really worried about trying to get those buses into the QuickTrip where you put in gas. They had a hard time with the diesel, with the semis, um, it just wasn't real convenient. And now with buses and gas, they said getting them in there is, is, they had some concerns about that. The other um thought behind that with the bus garage, four point oh, moving out to their new location, probably in January is what we're looking at. Getting the QuickTrip is not gonna be convenient at all for them compared to their location to Senex. We're also been working with the Co-op on possible um placement of some tanks out there. So we felt it was in our best interest to keep our relationship going with the Co-op. And um, that's our, you know, our recommendation of why we're recommending the Co-op versus QuickTrip. So, questions on, on that?
I know that a few years ago, I talked to a few bus drivers and actually they, they wanted to approach me. You know, why would you be more QuickTrip versus that, because they were paying attention closely to what the price was. At that time, QuickTrip was at times substantially higher than what the Co-op was. And they were asking for the rationale, but I just said, well, that's the stuff they committed. I think this is, I think the Co-op was true, it's very well asked. And like you said, they can drive in, they can drive out, you know, there. I mean, there is a bit of a gas influx there now, we got to drive in, but then they have to maneuver around the hard tires and people walking in and out of the store uh to the store all the time, so um, that's a better location too also.
That, that's what we felt, so that, that's our recommendation.
So when you talk about the gas pumps out at the Flack County site, so is this something they would come out, I mean, let's say someday we've got gas tanks out there. Do they fill them, they come out in the truck, they fill them out there?
They could. It depends on which direction we go. Um, we've talked about a couple of different options that we're exploring and still looking into. One option is to put in a huge tank out there, like a ten thousand gallon tank. That comes with a big cost, but you also get a substantial discount when you buy a full tanker. When you're buying seven five hundred to ten thousand gallons, you're able to lock in those prices um early on, like months ahead of time. They, four point oh already has locked in quite a few tankers for some of their other sites that they have the, the tanks stationed at. I don't think we'll be ready for this next year yet to have that in place if that's the wrong, if we decide to go. Um, they're looking right now at a couple smaller tanks. I think it might be more for some of their vehicles and their grounds vehicles to start with out there. I do know from the Co-op, they said if we um, we put in a couple of smaller tanks, like a thousand gallon tanks, and we want to use it for our buses out there, then our discount level goes to three cents on that instead of the six cents. So that doesn't make sense, you can go to the pump and fill up like we have been. So we're still gonna be exploring all those options and figuring out what's best. But in the long run, putting in a big tank, you, you do save money. So it comes down to, does the school want to own a tank that goes on somebody else's property? Um, you can work that out, or you then change your contract to have a fuel clause. Right now, the school buys all the fuel. When we had our other two contractors, they bought their own fuel, but then we had a fuel clause in their contract. So when it was over a certain dollar a month, then we paid extra. So then your contract's a little higher to compensate for that fuel. So you can set it up a couple of different ways. So, still things that we're in the discussion with about them and certainly exploring to see what's gonna be in the best interest for the district.
What I managed with a ten thousand gallon tank, it's not like, you have some, you may have a concrete wall, but it's something that you can do. You know, if there's something, some of these, it's not permanent, doesn't all the tanks, they're double wall, then they have an inner space in between the wall and where they have monitors. And that way, you have to build this huge containment. Uh, I know quite a few farmers around the neighborhood have installed in the last year, sold ten thousand gallon tanks.
So you don't need containment with that type of tank though?
Correct, you don't need a concrete barrier or road.
Okay.
You have the containment in, in between the two walls.
Sure.
It's, it's a double tank, double wall tank. And the inside area is where the monitors are. You are required by the M P C to have a monitor in that space. And it's, you know, automatically hooked up, you know, it's all electric, all, all, but uh, you know, it's not, it's likely to be a pro structure, you can just pick it up and move it.
And that's why they're so expensive to, the big tanks, so. And it's all things that we look at. Um, like the small tanks, if you put in a thousand gallon tank, they don't have the controls on them. Where if you put in a big tank, you can put it on the software system that every driver will have their own card like you do when you go to the pump. So you have a better control of who's filling up. So you don't want, you know, you don't want to risk, you don't, you don't want to have that control tight so that anybody can just go up there and fill. So those are all things that we're taking with that.
Yeah, can't put that out?
You can do that at home, I think.
A five hundred gallon tank, cold, it's going empty.
Yeah, kids, they just pull up to the last tank, right?
All in delight for a lot of that.
Yeah. I remember those things.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, any other questions? So I have a motion by Clark, second by John, to approve the bid from uh for gas and diesel from Clough Co-op. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item E, designation of official newspaper, action item, inclusion number five. Encloses the bid from McCloud Publishing Incorporated for McCloud Co-op, or McCloud County Chronicle to serve as the school district's official newspaper from July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-three. Cloud Publishing's quote is six fifty per column inch for legal business, seven fifty-two per column inch for non-legal camera-ready business, and nine sixty-four for non-legal, not camera-ready. The Cloud Publishing is currently providing the newspaper service for the school district. The quote obviously was for a rate of six twenty-five per column inch, and eight dollars for non-legal camera-ready, and nine eighteen for non-legal camera-ready business. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Jamie, do a second, second by Alicia. To accept the bid from Cloud Publishing Incorporated in, given McCloud County Chronicle through June thirtieth. From, it's June one. July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions? Hearing none, um, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Item A, approved district office staff contract, action item. Superintendent Sanju and school board negotiators also in the log card recommend approving the district office staff. Trish Laxtry and Tubert, Peterson and uh Hammer's contract from July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by John, do a second.
Go ahead.
Second by Clark. Do approve the district office contract, do we have any uh, any numbers on this?
Yes. Um, total package was about six point two two percent. A year one was four point two eight percent, a year two of one point nine four percent. Then a slight also um update to language to match uh other school contracts in the maximum um vacation time that they appeared or to that, the due date maximum that is in.
Thank you again for your work on this one, I know it was just a bear to deal with, Chris. Thank you all for your work on this and uh lots of meetings, so. Uh, anybody else have any questions on that? Alright. Uh, so I have motion by John, second by Clark, to approve the, approve the district office staff contract. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item D, approval of the I P contract. Superintendent Sanju and school board negotiators uh also in the log card recommend approving Terry Shogren, computer tech, two-year contract from July one, twenty-two, June thirtieth, twenty-four. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion? Do a second. Second by Alicia. Do approve a two-year contract with computer tech Terry Shogren from July one, twenty-two through July, June thirtieth, twenty-four.
Yeah, total package of six point oh eight, with uh split of year one and year two look at three point oh four percent, and then a little bit of changes.
Thank you again for your um, directors also in the log cards work on that. Any other questions? Hearing none, I got a motion by Jason, second by Alicia, to approve a two-year contract with the computer tech Terry Shogren from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-four. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item H, approved licensed nurse contract, action item. Superintendent Sanju and school board negotiators also in the log card recommend approving two-year contract with licensed nurse Angela Laxton from July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark, do a second.
So.
Second by John. Do approve the licensed nurse contract with Angela Laxton.
Yeah, six point two percent total package, year one, uh, three point three three percent, and year two, uh, two point nine three percent.
No language at this.
No, sorry, no language adjustments.
Not like there's much language in there.
I'll defer to some of that, so it's all, so it's, so it's.
Alright. Thank you again to our negotiators. Um, so I have a motion by Clark, second by John, to approve licensed nurse contract with Angela Laxton. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item I, school resource officer, S R O, this is board discussion item. Uh, Glencoe Silver Lake School District and the city of Glencoe have been working on a agreement to bring a school resource officer to the school district in twenty, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Superintendent Sanju will provide more information.
So, over the last probably two or three years, uh, we've been working with the Glencoe P D and just having these discussions about bringing an S R O. Um, and you know, it kind of felt like it's the time to, to actually really start um drafting something up and seeing if we can come up with an agreement. Uh, and so the city has given us a, a draft proposal uh that it would basically cost a school district sixty thousand dollars. And, and that's where we come into play in terms of our commitment to um provide financial assistance. And then in, in turn, um, the city of Glencoe would be providing officer, uh, you know, an officer here on site. And it would basically be, you know, around that hundred and seventy-five days. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy-two student contact days, so they would be here when the kids are in session. Uh, we would work together on, on schedules to kind of make sure that, that, that officer is, is here during the day. But at the same time, also to be able, uh, to be present at night in the events that we feel are necessary for an officer to be in. And, and so in, in working together and having those uh conversations, um, we're at this point of saying, we think that this is a good idea. Um, we, we've come together in, in terms of, of that contract. Um, like I said, it's in a draft form. We want to present it tonight to, to see if there are any questions or, or any comments on that. And then uh see where that goes, and then if all goes well, we'll bring it back to you on, in August for official approval. There was earlier today a uh city council work session that I attended and they discussed it there. And um, we're just gonna continue to move, move forward with this and um, hopefully come with an agreement. Uh, it, it's one of those things that, that obviously dollars and cents are, are a huge part of this. But at the same time, it's that, it's that investment or that preventative uh measure that we think is pretty important. Having the, the visibility of the officer, having the uh, the officer on site. Um, is just something that we feel in today's times is a, is a good thing to do. Um, and uh by working together to provide this service, um, I think everybody will, will benefit from it. Questions on any of that? Um, like I said, I know that the, this person is not gonna be our employee, you know, basically some contracting out S R O services with the, the city. Um, I know that they, they drafted up a contract that they uh, um, put together and, and you know, and reading through it, it kind of addresses what we would need to have, um, you know, the service that it provides, the, the, the knowledge, the um, the crisis planning type things we can have and we can work with them. Um, and at the same time, I hope you guys, we've been working with the city of Glencoe on this, if you know or have had meetings regularly. They attend our cabinet meetings and, and it's a positive relationship with the city of Glencoe. And um, the other thing that I would say is that this officer would be servicing Silver Lake as well, um, this school. So if there is issues or things like that that happen up in our school at Lakeside, this S R O would be that, that opportunity or would be the person that's on the call verse, you know, if there's, you know, obviously there's an emergency and you, we would still be calling uh nine-one-one and, and dispatch would get to whoever's there. But if there's those, those situations in which the S R O would be involved, but the student is up at Lakeside or they're in a medium, this officer would be uh servicing that school as well.
How often did you use Glencoe P D for contracting for event coverage and those kinds of things in the last year?
You know, most of the time the event coverage was mainly our, our Friday football games, um, and then a dancer there, that type of thing. Um, but they were at the school for a regular basis, we would dealt with, uh, dealing with just situations. And so, uh, the, the regularity of them being present in our school um was something that, that happened. You know, it wasn't certainly a day-to-day thing, but it was here quite often. Um, and so, you know, they talked about how when they did get called, that person would then be uh drawn off the, the street and, and doing their, their, their duty during that time period. Um, right now, this person, their duty would be here at school. And the big thing that, that we hope is gonna be happening is the deterrence, the, the preventative. And the big thing that, that we hope is going to be happening is the deterrence, the, the preventative, um, the building of the relationships, the investment of, of hopefully, um, things that SROs do. Uh, and that's where, where we came in together and said, it, it's time to, to have this program back. Um, it's been a while since we've had it. Things have gone well. But, um, we just think that in today's world, uh, I think it's a, it's a wise investment. The, the dollars that we would use are the, the dollars that are connected with our Safe Schools Levy. It's approximately a $60,000, um, dollar amount that we get from our Safe Schools Levy. And that was important for us to, to be able to say, you know, is this going to be something that's going to be continuous? And, and being able to have that levy be continuous and having those dollars be designated for something that fits under what those dollars have to be used for, um, it, it felt like it was a good thing. So, so it's, you know, it's not taking away from the general fund except for a potential a couple of thousand dollars or so. Um, the, uh, but, but the dollars that the Safe School Levy does provide, you can use for, for SRO services. There, there may not be as many cameras bought, you know, type of thing, but you hope that, you know, things like that. Um, but you hope that the, the presence of an officer at school and the relationships that they're going to develop and the preventative types of things that they're going to do would, would hope that, uh, would make up for that.
So getting back to events, is there anything in the contract that says we would get so many event coverage at all, or is that just?
It, it's, yeah, we just adjust their day. So that's what we talked about is, hey, this coming up here is, is this. And so then that person's day would be something where they would include it. And so, um, we, we kind of got a gentleman's agreement, so to speak, that, that would say, hey, this is where we need you on these days. Uh, and then that would be an extra fee then. And the flexibility of the officer, if, you know, in talking with, with Mark Larson and Chief Padilla, they, they mentioned that that's something they consider they'll do in Neycore. So in the meantime, if you have questions, let me know, um, as we move forward with this and, and, uh, we'll, we'll see where that goes. And, and if everything continues to move forward in, in our world, we'll have this back in, in August.
What's the duration of this agreement? I mean, I see that it's for the upcoming school year. Is it an automatic renewal? Is it a one-year? How does that get revisited or move on?
Yeah, each year I think we, we revisit that and move it up and up.
Well, according to the contract, I mean, it's a three-year agreement.
We, we have to decide every year how long.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
More, because if we do not prove those eight dollars, I would think we'd have a tough time setting up the general fund.
I would agree. It was part of the, uh.
But that sounds. I still pretty believe there's my vision there, isn't there? It says one party or the other.
I haven't heard it.
Yeah, the draft right now, unless it's changed, but the draft says it's a three-year agreement, but it can be terminated by either side, um, by written notice, by name first of each year.
So information only at this particular point in time. Let me know if you have questions and, and I'll keep you posted on things.
Clark, it does address, um, additional services also in the draft about, um, if we request them to meetings and something outside the regular school day, um, that they would work that out.
Has the draft included, um, Jared's?
I believe I sent it to.
All right. Um, I think it's a good thing and unfortunately we're moving to be, not unfortunately, but I think we're at that point where we need to do this. So that's my opinion. Uh, item J, formal evaluation of superintendent in July, information only. Uh, the school board conducted a formal evaluation of Superintendent Sanji, the personnel committee, directors Lefty and Bonberg will present a report on the evaluation, known school board act as necessary.
I'm just going to read what will be presented to Mr. Sanji here before our working, um, with him. While 2021, 22 school year was an adjustment, presented itself with obstacles on a daily basis. With another year, Mr. Sanji alongside many amazing staff at GSL, showed our district members what it meant to persevere through difficult and changing times. The 2021, 2022 year took a lot of flexibility, patience, motivation from all of them to give a great year for our students. With Mr. Sanji's leadership, the district was able to push forward in adjusted areas that are needed extra attention. The 2021, 22 school year required immense amount of teamwork and leadership from Mr. Sanji and his staff. Mr. Sanji and all the GSL staff worked together as a team on a day-to-day basis to balance the interests of all and interests and well-being of the district. This teamwork is a result of Mr. Sanji's leadership skills. One of the unwritten goals of the GSL school district was to have our children in school and in class while at the same time being saved as humanly possible. Mr. Sanji and his staff succeed in applying others. This GSL school board would like to thank Mr. Sanji for his last year of service and hope that this coming year adds up to less hurdles and obstacles than that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Moving on to item K, uh, first reading policies, action item. This is recommendation of policy committee, uh, to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school meeting. 101.1, name of the school district. 103, complaints from students, employees, parents, other persons. 201, legal status of the school board. 404, employment background checks. 405, veterans preferences. 406, public and private personal data. 416, drug and alcohol testing. 417, chemical use and abuse. 609, religion. 614, school district testing plan and procedure. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia. Bring back policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Item L, second reading policies, action item. The following policies received their first reading in the June 30th school board meeting. This is recommendation of the policy committee, Dr. Lefty and Laxton, and Superintendent School to adopt these policies. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Jamie, second by Clark. To adopt the policies listed above. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Item M, resolution to accept donations. This is recommendation of Superintendent Sanji to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? Second by Jamie. To accept donations again, nice, uh, a nice snapshot of our community donating to our school. Thank you again. Motion by Alicia, second by Jamie. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Item N is the, uh, identity board agenda. Uh, approved licensed nurse contract, uh, action item. Superintendent Sanji and school board negotiators, also having a lot of courage to recommend approving two-year contract with licensed nurse Laura Asians from July 1, 22 through June 30th, 24. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark, first second.
Sir.
Second by John. Uh, to approve licensed nurse contract with Laura Asians. Alicia, have any?
Yep. Um, so her contract, we said all the same as Angela's previously with the year one of 3.33 and year two of 2.93. No language changes for her contract.
Okay.
And no changes at all?
Nope.
All right. Any other questions? I have motion by Clark, second by, uh, Jamie?
Uh.
No, excuse me. To, I didn't hear any. Uh, to approve the licensed nurse contract with Laura Asians. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Item O, hiring of early childhood coordinator, action item. Superintendent Sanji recommends the hiring of Tamara Zaycheck. Uh, as early childhood coordinator contract is a one-year contract for 2020, for 22, 23 school year. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by John.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, we, we went through our interviews on Friday, um, and then went through the process of, of, uh, the contract here today and got it all finalized. Uh, it's a one-year contract. Uh, it's very similar. It outlines, uh, the exact same stuff that's in the contract for our coordinators that are in, under the community education umbrella with our coordinator with really, um, we have, uh, youth recreation and then our PAC coordinator. Um, $500 worth of health insurance each year, uh, or each month. Uh, it's a 12-month contract. There's one week of vacation. Um, there is, uh, I think six or seven holidays that are standard in there from, from most types of things. Um, and, uh, like I said, the rest of it outlines, uh, exactly the same as the other coordinators that are, that are in there. Tamara is very excited, very, um, ready to get going, and, um, she's scheduled to work and start on Monday, uh, one week from today.
That's the plan.
What's that?
You're disappointed.
Very happy. What did I miss?
Uh, just the reason why it's a one-year.
Oh, it's a, it's a one-year contract because that allows us to not only evaluate the position like we did say we were going to do, but it also puts you online with the other coordinators, um, in line with that as well, so.
Okay. Any questions, um, on that contract? Hearing none, I got a motion by Alicia, second by John to approve the one-year contract with Tamara Zaycheck for early childhood coordinator. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Item P miscellaneous. Isn't pretty happy miscellaneous at this time? Um, hearing none, do I have?
Oh, I just had one. So on the, we talked about the ECFE transportation though. How, how successful have you been connecting with those families? You know, what?
You know, there, I've had a few other families that have reached out. Uh, there hasn't been anybody except for one family that has said, hey, I want to look into the 4.0 aspect of things. Uh, and so that's still been pretty quiet for the most part. I think the families that are, um, come to ECFE, they're, they're figuring out on their own of, of getting there back and forth. Um, uh, but those services are available. Uh, one of the things that we'll be continuing doing is, you know, connecting with those families about, uh, the logistics of things because like I said earlier, we're going to be running a, a PAC program that's going to be before school and then after school that'll allow families to, to drop the, their child off. And so if that helps them with their transportation for themselves, because they have to come a little bit early, they're going to have that opportunity to do that. And so that might help a few families that don't need transportation then because they can utilize that PAC service, uh, and then they would just have to figure out their, their midday transportation. So it's still been pretty quiet in terms of that aspect of things, but there has been a few families that have reached out.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Clark. To adjourn at 6:42, 6:46 PM. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.